Good evening, this is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mrs. Ashcraft, does it... Mr. Messerschmidt?
Here.
Mr. Pressler?
Here.
Mr. York?
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, in the nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Pastor Young here? Alright. Let's get started. This time, I'm gonna look for the motion for the approval of the agenda with the revisions to reflect the overnight state for the wrestling team.
So, Mr.-
Mrs. Ashcraft, do you have a second?
I second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
The next item on the list is presentations. Mr. Scott, would you like for us to come down?
Yeah, you can. We don't have to turn the lights off, but yeah, if you would come on down.
Okay, that'd be great.
First of all, I appreciate your time, giving me the opportunity to share with you a lot of the hard work that we've put into trying to make the best choice for a K to five ELA curriculum for our students and our teachers here at Edgewood. As I thought about how to say everything in five or 10 minutes, it's a accumulation of work that's been over, I'd say, six, seven years or so, trying to make sure that we know exactly what the best thing to do for our students are. So, that's a difficult thing to do, so I thought I would highlight it, and it goes back to, I don't think, was Miss Beckett in here? She is. It goes all the way back to when I worked with Mrs. Beckett in the curriculum department, did a lot of work with Pam Thor and our state support team, of course, a lot of administrators and teachers. So, I will highlight some of the work we've done, and the reason why I wanted to show you this presentation is because at the organizational meeting that I believe is coming up within a couple of weeks, I believe, the superintendent will have a sizable quote on there that we are trying to hopefully get you to approve to get this new curriculum for our students. So, I wanted you to see it so that it's not a shocker when it comes your way. So, I didn't know at the title of the slide, I titled it "Preparing for the Shift," and I go all the way back, like I said, to Miss Beckett and I working together with a team of, I'd say, 20 teachers, and we applied for the Striving Readers Grant, and during that time when we applied for it, we noticed a lot of holes in some of our instructional materials, practices, et cetera, et cetera. And we noticed there that we didn't have a universal screener. We applied for this grant, and we could find all of our students had been assessed kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, but what we couldn't find is a student that had been given the same assessment kindergarten, first, second, third grade. We had given good ones, DRA, we had given a star assessment, I can't think of some of the other ones, but we couldn't find one student that had been given the same one for a number of different reasons, not that any other ones are bad, or good, or indifferent, or anything like that, but we knew that we needed an assessment, and during that time, we found ourselves being associated with a lot of experts at the state level. We implemented DIBELS as a universal screener. Again, I think that goes all the way back to Miss Beckett and I working together, and I think we probably are approaching maybe our fourth graders or so, or finally, a group of students who from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade or fourth grade have been given the same exact screener, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. And the DIBELS basically gauges fluency, comprehension, and a number of different things like that to see where they're at. So, we knew that was important, gives us a starting point on what our students need as a group and even individually. So, we implemented that, and we already do that now. We also begin to train our staff on science of reading, and I kinda get a kick out of that when I see it, because if there's a science of reading, I'm sure it's always been here, but for some reason, it's resurfacing, and we're kinda probably circling the wagons, going back to what works best. So, science of reading is like the latest and greatest buzzword of reading, and we met this lady named Carolyn Turner, who has since moved on to, I put literacy specialist, she's probably a guru or an expert, I don't know what other better term I could put on her for what she's been able to do to help us. She's the one that helped recommend DIBELS for us. So, we introduced what the five big ideas of reading are. They weren't new things, but we hadn't put them in those terms. We're going down into the school year, you can see there, 2018, 19. We introduced the staff to something called the Scarborough's Reading Rope, which is basically skills and knowledge. I'm flying through a lot of this stuff, and I do have some teachers here that have volunteered to come, if you have questions about any of this that gets too far into the weeds. We bought that book right there, Equipped for Reading Success, by Alfred, last name is Kilpatrick. I remember buying a book for every one of our K through three teachers, and I'd say we've probably had at least 50 of them attend a book study on that particular one, and I believe it's the maze assessment that comes out of that, is that what it's called? Pass. There's a lot of assessment, because there is a maze as well, correct? Yes. So, there's an assessment also that came out of that book that we used, a book called The Knowledge Gap. I would hate to test my knowledge, but is that Wexler? Okay, so I did good, that's another one. Writing Revolution, we did that book study, and then Uncovering the Logic of English, that's a very interesting book. I sat in on a couple of those studies. It goes back to like the, basically, the roots of the words and understanding where the words come from in order to help the students understand how to... For the first time, I realized why the students in the spelling bees say, "Can you give me the root of the word?" It's coming from books like this, and it helps those students actually spell those words. So, all of our teachers haven't done those, but we've had a lot of our teachers do all of those book studies. So, the reason I'm showing you this is just to show you the amount of work that we've put into building to get to where we are. So, we implemented HAGRITY, which is a phonemic awareness program. It's really for students that are in K two. We implemented it K through three, because we felt like our students were a little bit behind when we started giving them the universal screener. We had a big uh-oh moment, knew we had to do some catch-up, so that was implemented with fidelity, I'd say, just about 100%. And implementing with fidelity across the board in a school district sometimes can be a challenge for a number of different reasons, philosophical stuff, lack of knowledge, confidence, whatever it might be. We did a really good job at that, and it's still rolling pretty good, and as we've kicked around which curriculums are best, it's been pretty loud and clear to me that they don't wanna get rid of HAGRITY because they feel like it helps. And then Sunday Essentials, so HAGRITY is a supplement, let me say that, so it's like a tier-two instructional, you could probably call it tier-one or tier-two, but it's a supplement to your curriculum. And then Sunday Essentials is a phonics program, which is different than phonemic awareness. Hard to explain the difference sometimes, and we implemented that, you can see, back in '21, '22, and it is a very explicit 20-minute lesson, 20 minutes, correct? 20-minute lesson, and you will see teachers saying stuff, like they will say the syllables out loud, and then the kids repeat the syllables to them, or they'll say a word and say, "Now say it without this letter," and then say another word, "Now say it without this letter," and it is like a rote drill and practice. Is that the correct way to probably word that? I'm looking back at my teaching experts back here to help me make sure I include everything. We're moving along to knowing that we then needed, we also have literacy plans for the buildings that we developed. When we started filling out that Strivers' Reading Grant, we realized that buildings should have some form of a literacy plan, so we put together literacy teams in the buildings and started to build literacy plans. Every time we got back to rating ourselves on this thing we do called a reading-tiered fidelity inventory, every time we got back to rating ourselves on that, we realized we need a curriculum. We need a curriculum. We need a curriculum. So, we thought, let's get in some materials and start to have some people from these companies contact us and come present, so that we can make some informed choices about what we think's best for our kids. Started doing that. You can see some gaps there sometimes in the time, because you gotta remember, COVID happened in all of this timeframe here, so it kinda put a pause on our ability to accelerate or move a little bit quicker than we wanted to. So, the first people that we had come out was this Savis Reading, which also is the same company that does our Envision Math, and you could tell that our teachers had been pretty trained and knowledgeable about science of reading, because they started talking about leveled readers and different, what we would call old-school methodology about how to instruct reading, and they were like, "No, no, 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 no. We don't wanna do that. We're trying to get away from what this company is saying to do." So, then we brought in Amplify CKLA, which is Core Knowledge Language Arts, and when we brought them in, they said, "No need to bring in anybody else. We love this." So, I sent out a little survey, and it was nearly unanimous. If I remember, I think there was one vote on the Google forum that we sent out where they said, "Hey, I'd rather not." Every other teacher said, "We wanna pilot this." So, we started the pilot, and we selected that team last year, or '21, '22, last year, and that's because I wanted to make sure that we got input from folks, and then we provided PD for that pilot team. I think every teacher in here sat in that PD right over here in the library, as well as, I'd say it's about 20, 25 or so, sat through that PD provided by Amplify CKLA. And then we implemented that pilot with the pilot team this year in the fall, so it's up and it's going, and I've heard an enormous amount of feedback about what I would say is enriched vocabulary that they're hearing from their kids and actually using what they're learning in practice, like not just taking a test on it, but actually showing that they can do the stuff. Every time I look back here, I'm getting a lot of head nods from our teachers. So, I just wanted to show you this. We are about right here. I made a little implementation timeline for them. We selected a curriculum to pilot. We selected the teachers. We are about right here in winter of '02. If we can get the go-ahead on this curriculum in the spring, I'm gonna call what we do, do what we call a soft implementation. The teachers that have these books in their hands, they'll be able to kick the tires on it, learn about it, and we'll do some PD in the summertime. Now, our pilot team will be able to help enormously here with this soft implementation, when teachers that aren't in the pilot get the books in their hands and get the stuff in their hands. Our pilot teachers, who are a very strong team of teachers, will be able to help them implement and learn how to do that. We will bring in CKLA, Amplify, again, this summer to train more teachers, and when I say K to five, we have four fourth-grade ELA teachers and four ELA teachers in the fourth grade, and then in K through three, it's all the teachers teach ELA. And then full implementation is what we're hoping for in the fall. So, there's been a lot of work. Here's the team of teachers that were chosen to pilot. There's a lot of really good expert teachers on that list right there. It's an all-star team of teachers. So, here's the news about how much it costs, and I know that sounds like a lot. The next slide's gonna show you what we plan to do to make all this money back over the next couple of years, so that in essence, we're actually, what I believe, we're gonna save some money, but we're gonna find a way to get it paid for. This price that you see right here is no activity books, and I've had some conversations about the teachers, and they're not excited about not getting the activity books. We're gonna take a good, hard look at our lower-grade levels, so I'm hearing the most about the lower-grade levels, K one, two, where they really feel like they need those books for the lower grades. There's a skills and a knowledge. We're probably gonna look at skills first, because I'm hearing that skills are the book that they really, really take home or even do in class to help supplement and move along this program here, this curriculum. I am, as long as we get approval, I have a letter from Amplify that is allowing for me to put in these amounts, that we can make this in three installments. The reason why it's a six-year quote is because every textbook company you check with will be a six-year, like, once you get to the six-year mark, they turn the off switch on all your online access. So, you got all your books, you got all your stuff, and they're like, "Hey, you know what, though? We're turning the switch off on you, and you can't access our stuff anymore," which is part of what makes the curriculum robust and good and nice and cutting-edge. So, any updates they do to their curriculum in six years, we get that. It's like when you get an update on your computer, or whatever it might be. We'll get the latest and greatest that Amplify CKLA has for the next six years. So, there's the payments. Here's, so the estimated cost, I thought I would throw that on there. Five hundred thousand is what the workbooks would cost for six years, and the reason that cost is so high is the company is saying, "We are printing you books every single year, man, for all of your kids for six years," so that adds, it looks like about 150,000 or so, so, pretty good amount of cost, and knowing that we are trying to be as cost-conscious as we can, I thought we would leave them off for now and see if we can revisit some student fees, not to raise the fees, but see if everything on there, if some stuff could maybe be traded out for these workbooks. So, that's some of the conversation I've had with the teachers. Wanted to talk about this real quick, and I'll fly through it. There is a new law, House Bill 36 there, and every student, beginning next year, I think, do we have Miss White in here? Beginning next year, right in Alicia, all students have to be screened for dyslexia. This right here, we were gonna have to buy anyway, because we have to, by law, screen all these students. The good news is, it happens to be that this little in-class intervention, they have already married Amplify CKLA. They are one company. We already buy DIBELS, so that's part of what was in that big cost. So, Amplify CKLA and DIBELS, there are one housed curriculum, and they call that little part of, there's also an intervention kit that comes with this. It's really, really good. Don't have time to talk about the intervention kit, but they're seeing, would you say, better growth than you ever have on your beginning of the year to the middle of the year? Better data, and they were raving to me, sending me texts, that how much their students have grown from the beginning of the year till now, and they would say it's because of all these things we're doing. So, that cost that we were gonna pay in the fall, that's built into the cost of this curriculum. So, the way that we're gonna try to do this with no new money is through some of the federal grant funding that I've worked really hard with Dr. Thor. She's done an outstanding job at finding where we can find money through, I would be afraid to even start naming all the grants. I'd just say that she's done a really good job at freeing up some funds that right now we have, that's already been accounted for, correct, and we can apply it to that big number that I gave you, that 300 and something thousand. So, that's good. So far, no new money. I will eliminate the six-year contract, or six years of educational service center contracts we have. We would just have to do a little bit of heavy lifting with our teachers. These coaches help us with our CCIP, they help us with our math curriculum maps, they help us with our reading, or science curriculum maps, but in order for us to get this, I, every teacher that I've talked to is like, "Yes, we will try to do the work to be able to get this." You can see that that number by itself is higher than the first number I already gave you. I'd love for this to somehow down the road work the workbooks into this picture, whether it be next year or the year after. We also have, this is our old reading, Wonders Reading. We still have teachers that are utilizing the online version of that. That saves us 39,000 over the six-year contract, and then, so that would be a total of 399,000 that we were able to come up with. Some we already have, right there, and then eliminating these contracts, which would mean what normally comes out of the budget for curriculum and reading instruction, all that type of stuff. We won't use it for what we normally do. We won't apply it all to the K to five reading program. So, I threw a lot at you right there, but I wanted to at least be able to talk about how much time we've invested. When we hear back from CKLA and Amplify, the biggest feedback that I get from them, when they come out to view, they came out last week and watched our teachers pilot it, and in fact, they even shared one of our teachers' lessons from over at Miss Halsey's building and said, "We're gonna tell every other school to try the lesson the way that she did it." It was, they dressed up, it was like a hospital, basically, that the kids were coming to, and they had to go through all the rooms, and the student came in and would, they would like take them in, as a patient, and before you could discharge them, you had to do all the activities, and then get their little doctor file, and they had their white vest on, and all their little doctor things on. It was a really cool lesson. So, the main feedback that I get from Amplify is, "I can't believe the types of questions your teachers are asking. We know you've done the work on science of reading," because they wouldn't ask the questions that they're asking if you hadn't done the work. So, I didn't know if you would have any questions at this point for me or some of these teachers, but we are going to be presenting that in hopes that you would approve it, either at Miss White's meeting with you all in the next organizational meeting, or we can bring it in January. But it's a big number, and I know the state that we're in with all of that, so, wanted to present, if you have any questions for any of the teachers yet.
So, first of all, I appreciate you having teachers in here, because obviously, this, you know, you've got more of my attention, because it's been invented for the people that are actually gonna deliver it in the classroom. I've got two questions that I think you could probably answer today, and then obviously the last one's gonna have a lot to do with the cost, and obviously, you mentioned the financial situation that we're in. So, the first question that I have is going to this activity book, and I actually have had several conversations over the course of just the last couple of weeks with parents in the district with students K through five, and the comment has come up that, you know, my child's just not bringing home a lot of homework. There's, I just kinda expected that there would be more homework and that they would be doing more at home. So, my question is, is, does this curriculum allow there to be opportunities for kids to take the work home and to do it, to do it at home, and if we, for some reason, do not decide to go after the activity book, what is it that we're gonna replace that with? Do we have resources?
Yes.
Do we create assignments?
I should, I should. I neglected to tell you, so let me, I think I can answer both of those. We have online access to everything that we can legally print and copy, because that's part of the on, when we buy the online access. So, all of that is online, but as you know, every time that copier spits out a copy, there's a cost to that. If John could probably tell you, Mr. Thomas tell you, it's probably a cent, two cents, three cents, but over the course of a couple thousand kids for six years in a row. My plans are to talk to the ESC and say, "What would a small printing contract cost for something like that? If we could get to you what we needed and bring down the cost and include that in the fees," so there's a way to do that. But I also know at the lower-grade levels in K one, two, there's a little bit, I'm gonna say about $15 of the student fee, that they really wanna take a closer look at and see if they can free up some of that to just get the workbook included into the student fees. So, we do have the books, we can print them, which we've been printing some this year, because there was, like everywhere else in the world, shipping was disastrous. We're still waiting on fifth-grade books we paid for three months ago. She's like, "That's right, we do have this box to come to you," so that's been a disaster. So, we've been making a lot of copies on our own, and kudos to the teachers. We're giving some of them, like, I know Miss Wells is one of the pilot teachers at EIS. We give her a big box of three-ring hole punches. The kids open up the three-ring binder, they shred the old stuff, they put the new unit in there, click it shut, but that's one of the answers for that. On homework, so, that's a deep, deep question. It happens to be one of our interview questions for teachers, and the way we view homework is that it's not just everybody takes home something that the whole class does, because that's like an assignment. What we would like homework to be is, if I have Mr. Gabbard in class and we're doing fractions, and I keep noticing that he's struggling with a portion of the fractions, I'm gonna say, "Hey, I know Mr. Fryer does a great job at this. He'll like customize the kids' homework to go home with them." So, some homework would be enrichment, which could be some reading time. Some homework could be time to do, so not every kid would have the same one. If we're doing fractions and you're acing them, I'm gonna try to give you an enrichment assignment, maybe a time or two a week. And then there's a lot of, there's a lot of differing opinions about how you grade that. So, you asked like a, like a question we could probably talk about for about an hour. I see Mr. York kinda glancing when we talk about homework. That is a deep, deep philosophical. There's a lot of stuff all over the board, because if I send home a first grader home every single night with homework, and mom and dad are working, and they gotta, and then, well, they might not bring it back the next day, because they're a first grader, and they don't have those skills to be responsible enough to bring it back. I send another one home, mom and dad's home every night, and they tell them, "You're not going outside, you're not getting on that Xbox. You're gonna sit down and do that homework," and now that homework counts in their grading. Mom and dad just help pretty much get that kid a higher grade than the other kids. So, there's just a lot of stuff about it, so...
Is this, is this exportable to, like, homework assignments?
Yes, 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 yes. They can print them out.
I do appreciate the insight into that. That's-
Yeah. So, if you needed something printed out, I could hit print. I'd get it right off the printer and say, "Mark, take this home. Do this tonight."
So, my other question is, and it's been a little bit of time since I looked at it, but I thought when I was looking at the district scores, K through five, looking at reading scores and looking at math scores, I thought like in comparison to state averages, we did pretty well in the area of reading holistically as a-
You're correct. Yes.
But I thought math was kinda off. Are we-
Math has been traditionally, since I've been here, so let me just say, since I've been here in about the last five, six, seven years, which is why we bought the math curriculum right, we rolled it out in the middle of COVID, which we needed it, so we did it. We're still trying to make up some ground on the lack of quality rollout. Like I talked about the implementation here, didn't feel the same, didn't look the same. But I will say, the reason why I believe, and I know Mr. York and a lot of the other educators that are in here, when they came out with that third-grade reading guarantee mandate maybe a decade ago or so, tons of resources started getting poured into, maybe out of fear, because, you know, kids couldn't go to the fourth grade. Well, the bottom line is, 99.5% of the kids all go to the fourth grade, because they get six tries to take, take an assessment. They get three of the air tests, and then they get three, what they call vendor-approved, which we use what's called the Terra Nova, or a Star Renaissance test. So, they're moving on, and the teachers, we've made this comment before, kudos to the teachers for figuring out how to get these students across the finish line without what we believe is a necessary resource, but they put more time into it. Would that be fair to say, especially at the lower grades? When you walk around a high school, you hear a lot of different stuff. You know, you hear Mr. Johnson teaching science. You'll go and hear, you know, somebody, Miss Johnson, Mrs. Johnson teaching math, and when you walk in an elementary hallway, you hear and feel a lot of reading. It's just the nature of and culture of lower primary grades. I'm just giving you some like honest, open dialogue about why I feel that occur.
I think another thing, Scott, that we, this has been brought up before, but I don't want us to be compared to state scores. I wanna beat, I wanna beat Talawanda and Watawa and the other schools in Butler County.
Sure.
Those, because all of them are scoring higher than state averages also.
Sure.
So, it's not, the state scores really are generally low.
Sure.
And we wanna, I think we wanna be on top in the people that we live with here in Butler County as opposed to state.
Yeah.
You know, if they're doing good for us, compare ourselves to somebody in Cleveland.
Right.
And that's what state scores do, so...
Yeah.
And the homework thing, it's been a topic of debate for 17 years, before policy in regard to how much time kids should be spending on homework. It is less in the lower grades and more as you go up, and, you know, there's probably as many parents out there that don't want their kids doing three hours of homework at night as there are kids-
Sure.
Parents who say, "How come they don't do homework?" So, it is one of those things. It's a debatable issue and has been for 17 years.
So, regardless of what metric we evaluate ourselves against, I mean, is it fair to say that our math score is commensurate with our reading scores?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and part of, part of the, when we started comparing ourselves to the state, I was having some deep, when you start talking about data, people in, sometimes in schools, understandably, we don't wanna make a student a data point. These are real kids that we're trying to really get to either enlist, employ, or get an education beyond their high school. So, I call those the three Es, by the way, but we were below state in some of our scores, so I would kinda bring it to, as Mr. York said, "Well, I know we can at least get here." I mean, we should be well beyond the state average, as Mr. York is saying, but, man, if we're below that, can we at least get there? So, that was kinda the push behind that, but he's, he's correct that, you know, and in fact, I think in our latest scores, unfortunately, we're about 3% behind in our third-grade fall scores from ELA, behind Talawanda, but because I look at the-
Scott, can I just, can I just run a-
Yeah.
I have found with districts across southwest Ohio, the districts that are scoring lower in many grade levels are using materials that are not teaching more at the open end level, those higher-level questioning. So, that has been an interesting concept to talk to superintendents that are noticing. If I have a math curriculum that's skill drill, they've done great in those questions, but when it goes to apply it to new situations and write about it, that's where the scores are dropping. I haven't seen an assessment in five years. I'm just going on hearsay, but it makes sense.
And that's one of the number-one things I'm hearing from the teachers, is that the students are applying it. The application-
Like with the math, they can't read it and they're expected to read the math problem, they're expected to solve whatever math problem is and they're expected to write it in the sentence. So they are already behind what they're reading and we're not closing that gap with the reading. We have to zero in on that first. If a kid can't decode the word that's on paper, um, then that's, they can't, yeah, they can't, yeah, so then that's.
And then secondly, to go with curriculum, often the state sets the assessments, they're, you know, they're designing the questions. We now have this House Bill four thirty-six that we have to understand and instruct and assess. And what I'm hearing is, you know, we don't have new money for new curriculum, so the, the curriculum department's done a really good job to look at the money we have, reallocate it so that we can give our students the materials that we're supposed to have, that's mandated instruction by the state and have the instruments in hand for the teachers to assess and intervention materials when they're not hitting the benchmark to intervene. If, this is really like what I call a non-negotiable, we have to get it, the question is, how are we gonna get it? So they've done a bang-up job looking at funds that they're currently using and reallocating them.
And that's, that, that's our job. I mean, we, we can't, we can't cut on that kinda stuff. That's what we do and we got great teachers and we gotta give them the tools.
But they did cut, they cut from their, which I give, they've done a good job.
So I mean, we've, we've gotta, we've gotta go for that and stuff. That's the one thing I would ask when we come back at the next meeting and you talk about this, cause you, you went through the cost of this very quickly and I was having a hard time following a lot of that. I would really like to see the way that's all broken down, where that money's coming from. And you made the comment even about maybe even saving some money. I, I would like to better understand what you're doing about that.
Okay, yeah, well, when I, so the, the cost of it is three hundred and fifty-two thousand, I think, I think is what the.
Right.
So cutting the contract, the E S C contracts is three sixty over six years, so that saves eight thousand over the next six years. We're not counting the one hundred and thirty-one of already federally funded money that we have, so we're gonna be at that, we're a hundred and forty to the good after six years by purchasing the, well, really by eliminating those educational service contracts.
Now Scott, you also worked with them on the six years, initially they had a three-year quote, I believe, or.
I've had like ten quotes from them, man, just what does one year cost, two years? And at the advice of Ms. Beckett, I said, man, what if we just tried three years? She said, don't do that, Scott, you gotta get to six years, I've been down that road before, you don't wanna have to keep going back for, because.
And it was cheaper.
It's cheaper, they, they, they really have a price, uh, 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 structure that when you get more, they start knocking off so much, it's, it's a very creative way for you to get six years. They want you to get to six years, I mean, we would, we really wouldn't even save in six years, or, or if we got a lesser one.
So if I'm doing math in my head, so what I'm hearing is the actual cost is about two hundred thousand dollars over the course of six years. When you take the three forty and you subtract the one forty, you save down about two hundred, is that, is that about what we're saying?
Take one thirty-one away from two, away from three fifty. And then whatever you're left with, take three sixty away from that too. We're not spending that that we normally spend, so now you're gonna be down in the negative. We're gonna save money. As long as we don't go back to the E S C and get those contracts again, we're gonna save, we'll be, we'll be saving money.
No, I have a question about that. So they're helping do curriculum maps and coaching and all that. What is our checks and balances to make sure that we're gonna stay on target with that?
Well, the good news about Amplify C K L A is when you get on there, they've got it completely mapped out. If, if you wanted to stay completely to what they say they have, day one, day two, day three, so reading K to five is done. It's done, you get it with it. Um, the, the other one that we use is, uh, Dr. Michelle Walker Glenn for math. She just updated all of our math with our teachers last year. Uh, there're not gonna be a lot of state changes, so we can give our teachers P D days at the end of the year, like a, a, a day where they get a sub in and they work together. So it'd be like maybe, uh, Mr. Fryer, Ms. Stover would work together to update that and make sure they're still aligned with the standards, put new stuff in there. The other third contract is actually our state support team, which I've talked about her before, Holly Sampson, that helps with our systems, our D L T, D L Ts and all that. So that's the three, um, the, the other one's Dave Verneau for science. Uh, science, math and curriculum for E L A will be done for this.
So my other question is, if, do we have to decide activity books now? Or is it like we can?
I'd rather revisit our, um, our, our, uh, student fees to see if we can get creative at the lower grades. What Amplify tells me is usually what they see in schools is at the lower grades, it's more heavy activity books. As you move up to four and five, they don't use them quite as much, so they'll print and give them to the students as needed. So if we can get creative in the lower grades with our student fees, I think we can get a lot of them covered without raising the fees.
Well, what I'm asking is, if we say we only wanna do the curriculum and not do the activity books, are we locked into that? We can't go back?
No, we can always get books.
Okay.
And they would discount those for us because of the purchase.
So if the work goes here to here, we combine one year and another next, that's, they're asking.
Yes.
Like if we decide like, it's okay.
Right, and that's kinda why I don't have them on here now, because there might be other pathways to. But with time being of the essence to roll out a curriculum of this magnitude, about, about mid-year, we need to figure out if we're gonna do it so we can do what we need to do.
Thank you.
My, my last question, Scott, I appreciate all the information. At the end of six years, is this something we revisit again?
We would, we'd probably revisit it, eh, at the beginning of year six or five, we start talking about it. Um, the hope is that you love it, you like it, and you wanna continue to use it, it makes it a whole lot easier. You're not piloting, you're not doing anything, you're just getting another board approval for a new quote, you roll with the same stuff.
Till the state adopts something.
Yeah, and they, till they adopt something else and don't fund it, and you gotta come up with all kinda other creativity, but yeah. So. Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Scott, I, I think we've, we've kinda got a plan here, allocating some money for, for curriculum. So, next we have public participation, I do have Dave Combs. Would you, would you care to come up, yeah, if you don't care, would you come up here? Can you talk loud?
I'll, I'll do my best. Uh, thank you guys, what I have tonight is, uh, a letter that was, has been composed by my wife and I concerning, uh, the safety of our school buses. Um, and it's a brief description, it's a summary of our perspective and what happened at the accident. So if I may, I'd like to read that letter to you. Dear Board Superintendent, Principals, Transportation, Local First Responders and Community, please allow us to serve as a summary of the bus accident on December first, twenty twenty-two, and plead for improved handling of accidents and emergencies within the, the district. As some of are aware, there, there was a bus accident around two twelve P M on December first, twenty twenty-two, at the intersection of State Route seventy-three and five oh three. Bus number twenty-two marked on the side as bus twenty-four with riders of bus fourteen was traveling approximately forty miles per hour west through the intersection downtown as a twenty-twenty-two Jeep Cherokee ran the stop sign into the side of the bus directly in front of the rear tires. This bus is believed to have gone over the hood of the vehicle with its rear left back tires. Bus twenty-two sustained damage to the side rear axle and flat tires and was not driving. The driver was able to maintain control of the bus preventing the accident from being worse. Inside the bus, unsurprisingly, after a T-bone accident, the twenty-two students were dossled and at least three hit their heads. Those sitting toward the impact in rear were dossled more significantly, those arriving on scene determined the accident to be minor. E M Ts never spoke to each student and did not walk past the first few rows of seats. The driver, principal and superintendent were only individuals who asked the health and wellbeing of most students. One student happened to have been discovered as needing to be seen by the E M T and she was afforded that opportunity. My two daughters were sitting in seats fifteen and eleven, which are located on the left side of the bus near the impact area. My daughter in seat fifteen phoned alerted our family app that she was in an accident. She was spoken to individually by her principal and asked, are you fine? My daughter in seat eleven was also asked along with her seatmate by the principal a quite similar question. Of course, they both replied they were fine to their principal. At two fifteen, each of her daughters were texted, had texted our family group chat to let us know that their bus had been hit and, but they were okay. My wife and I replied with more specific and appropriate health questions, including acknowledging adrenaline sometimes masking injuries. In reply, at two twenty-four, my daughter in her seat eleven let us know she hit her head on the seat. At that, my wife immediately left for a travel to the scene where she was powerless as the daughters were not permitted to come to her. She watched this sleep as she easily became aware that my daughters never spoke with the E M Ts and the students were quickly being loaded onto other, another bus to finish the route. My wife nor I were contacted by the district until the next day. We did, we received no robocall, text, email or personal phone call on December first. It became obvious to us in a matter of a few minutes, only those who were staff were receiving messages. There was however, a public message note, notification on the edge of an app that was confusing vague and misleading to what actually had happened and whose kids were involved, et cetera. By evening the next morning, our daughters were sore. As our daughter in seat eleven headache and business persisted, we took her to the hospital the next day, she sustained a concussion. She was put on concussion protocol, her physical activities, uh, were canceled, her family claims changed upon doctor's recommendations. For those precaution, the standard neck injury protocol, the doctor insisted she wear a neck brace for one week following the accident. Although sore and tired, tired, our daughter in seat fifteen attended school the next day. There was a meeting for students, uh, a bus, uh, let's see, for the bus of the E M S. A counselor did not conduct, uh, the meeting nor was present. Uh, my wife nor I were ever contacted by the district with, uh, decided, no, sorry. My wife nor I ever, nor I were ever contacted by the district with decided individuals insurance information or updated or reassured as to how this will be improved. Our family awaits the appropriate accident procedure and reassurance that our children are being safe in Edgewood's care, in school and on buses. Our family implores the Board Superintendent and Administrators to review Edgewood's board policies. Eighty-four forty-two, fifty-three forty and twenty-one eleven, the, we hope reassurance could be provided to our family by the time our children return to school on January fourth and to the, the entire community in the next quarter. Thank you, it's really Dave Combs and my wife. I, I thank you for your time, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm not after anybody, you know, I, obviously I'm upset, you know, my kids were hurt, but, you know, we're on the same team. Anything I can do to help you guys to improve or suggestions, I, I would love to, 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 to get back, uh, in that area and if you, you know, would like mine, my opinion and how things get improved, I would love to, uh, talk or something. Thank you, I thank you guys.
Appreciate it. Hey, Dave, I, Dave, I appreciate you coming up here, having this conversation tonight. I, I thought we were gonna talk about this in the agenda, but I think it's been removed, is that correct? Um, I, I do think that we do need to have some discussion about this in terms of processes and procedures. And I would think it would be a good idea to maybe look at doing that as soon as we come back after the first of the year and review some processes and procedures. But I do appreciate you coming up here and taking the time to talk about this tonight, thank you.
I'll thank you guys again, appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna move on to treasure items. Uh, Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Uh, yes, at this time, uh, we would like a motion to approve the board minutes from November twenty-first, regular board meeting.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular board minutes from November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. So, Mr. Messerschmitt, do I have second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, would you call, roll please?
Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, um, we're asking for a motion to approve the treasures items that are listed, the financial report for November twenty-twenty-two, the receipt ledger, disbursement summary and purchase orders over ten thousand dollars and then a malfeasance over three thousand dollars.
Looking for a motion to approve, have you grouped B, C, D? No?
No.
All right.
Just four reports.
No- November twenty-two financial rewards as presented.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mr. York's second. Mrs. Bowers, would you call, roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft, yes. Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, we're asking for a motion to approve the resolution declaring necessity for raising four million, four hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars annually for school district purposes.
Looking for a motion to approve the resolution declaring necessity for raising funds of school district purposes as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Pressler, do I have second?
Second.
Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, would you call, roll please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft, yes. Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, I would like a motion to approve transfer, um, of funds. This is for, um, the corporate sponsorship, uh, a hundred dollars of each sponsorship is to go to funding the Hall of Fame.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve fund-to-fund transfer, uh, as presented. So Mr. Pressler, do I have second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes, sorry.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call, roll please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. At this time, uh, we're looking for a motion to approve a president pro temp or the organizational meeting. Um, we're proposing to do that on January the ninth.
I nominate Jerry Gabbard.
Do you need a second for that or what?
Second.
So we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call the vote?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And are we okay to do that January the ninth?
What day is that?
Monday. It's on my name. It'll be two weeks before I read the meeting.
Very short meeting.
You know, motion, yes.
Looking for a motion to approve our organizational meeting, January the ninth at six P M. Does that work? Does that work? Yeah. Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler, Mrs. Bowers, would you call, roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft, yes. Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
So we're not doing any business there, right, that's just.
We are doing the, um, we're okay with the curriculum.
Yeah, that's what I thought, are we, are we voting on anything that night?
On the curriculum, we can't get that expedited, I thought we used, prefer not, we're gonna move it to the next meeting. Didn't we just approve the purchase order for it?
No, that's a different one.
Oh, it is? Oh. Did you approve the purchase order for it? We didn't see it on the agenda, it was on the P I's over ten thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's Amplify, it's for textbooks, but it's, I don't think it's the same thing, right?
We thought it was on here for approval, but we didn't see it, so it must have been hidden, so maybe we don't have a business side of that. I thought that's what I was agreeing.
I, 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 I see it right here, it is on purchase orders over ten thousand, it says Amplify one thirty-one, uh, a hundred thirty-one thousand, that is.
First payment?
The first, it's all.
Yes, that's the first payment. I was looking for like a five-page, I was looking for what I've been looking at for the last.
Well, you typed up a five-page. And then.
It's a, I mean, you just voted for the first payment to go through.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that's what we were voting on, I thought it was something different.
Well, I thought we was bringing it in for our organizational meeting.
I thought, okay, so technically, just so you know, it was supposed to be up tonight, we didn't see it. So we said we'll put it on the organizational, it needs to be expedited as soon as possible. I would suggest, since we didn't know what we just voted for, let's go back and do a vote, we can pull that item.
Right. We were looking for. Right. We were looking for it as an individual item on there. Didn't see it.
I'm gonna ask. I, I agree, I agree with it. I, I agree with it.
I'll find it.
It has a trademark though, I just realized that's what I.
Okay, okay.
I still like that discussion.
I still want Scott to prepare a brief.
Sure.
Five pages minimum.
Five minutes, five, five hundred and six.
Single spaced, and I want it due December twenty-sixth, please, so I play it out to you.
I'll turn it on twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
One more questioning?
What?
One more question?
No.
You go.
I, I think we're all good. I mean, we obviously don't wanna fall behind in curriculum.
No, I, I don't have, I mean, it doesn't change my vote. I just, I was confused. I didn't think that was the same.
And, and I mean, I'd like to have some more information too about the worksheets.
Okay.
Uh, if there's a way to, uh, finagle that in or an outside contractor printing them off for is cheaper, I mean, we need to.
I meant with the teachers, Dave, we're gonna move forward trying to get the board approved with what we did tonight, and then I think what we can do after break is come up with a plan B for the work.
Yeah, we can bring it back into this room to play the.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Yep. All right, Mrs. Bowers, where are you at?
Uh, exclusivity agreement. Um, at this time, we would ask for a motion to approve, um, I'm not sure if Mr. Thomas is still in the room, but he has been working with Mr. Abbott. Um, and this is basically to allow him exclusively to go out and shop the best rates for us.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the exclusivity.
So moved.
Agreement. Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler, Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, at this time, the next thing I have on here is just informational, and, um, we have been working again with budgets and whatnot. And it was brought to my attention that we are currently about thirty-three thousand dollars, a little better than in lunch charges for this year. Um, we're, we're not sure of the, uh, logistics of how we're going to fix this problem, but I wanted to bring it to you also, shed the administrative guideline. Um, we have somewhat of a lunch policy where they're supposed to be charging fifteen dollars and then they go to, it's a peanut butter sandwich, cheese sandwich, a fruit, and a milk. We have not done that, um, we have not done a good job with that this year. We don't wanna turn the kids away and tell them that they can't eat, but we see this growing, and like I said, we're at thirty-three thousand dollars in lunch charges this year. I've broken down, if you're interested in looking at the, the building, but we do feel like that this is, um, gonna continue to grow. We have sent out several notices to parents, trying to get them to apply for free or reduced lunch. Um, we have got a lot of those backed. Um, I'm not sure if more people qualify that just don't apply, but I wanted to make you aware of this issue, that we are trying to come up with, um, some way to resolve this. And we would like to move forward and try to use the administrative guideline and serve this basic lunch, if you will, um, if we can, just to avoid these charges increasing.
So that, that's already gonna be administrative guideline?
Yeah.
How come we're not doing that, I wonder?
I, I'm not exactly sure. We just started looking at the charges and then this was brought to me the other day.
I just told that it has not been followed in the past, prior, prior to COVID, that, um, there may be a, a misunderstanding or a philosophy that we should feed them at all costs. My, my suggestion is, do I have a guideline if you're not gonna follow it? So I really would like to push the guideline forward. Every student will be fed, no matter what. It's just they will not have the menu item that day. After fifteen dollars, they get to choose, do I do peanut butter or do I do cheese and I get a fruit and a milk? Also, phone calls will, will be made before that would ever happen. Um, we're talking about putting out a message to families, you're now at three lunch charges, this is what happens, you know, at fifteen. And then also, uh, personal call even before that, we can make that happen. Um, what we need to work out is that, how, what will that look like in the lunch line? And that's gonna have to be something each building will have to figure out.
What, I think my question is, what have we done in the past to collect this money?
Uh, you would not want to know. We haven't done a very good job collecting it since COVID. And I believe last year, I don't know if that is, was it a rollover of like two hundred and twelve thousand?
Yeah.
And lunch charge. We don't want that to happen again this year, as we're looking at a two point eight million deficit for next year. So it, it may look like we're coming off really hard in those, but we have to get this spending under control.
I, I tell you, I, I just have a real hard time with this. Uh, it's not the kids' fault. And until we, I mean, it doesn't sound like there is a precedent where we've done a really good job of going after the, the money. I think that we should, we should try some other things before we take this drastic step. I just, I have a real hard time going for something that's gonna prevent it from having a kid eating something that is different than what everybody else.
It's already a guideline, Mark, so it would have to be where we go in and maybe have a work session and change it, because right now the policy, you're right, it hasn't been followed, so there's been precedent of that. Um, but it needs to be revised because we're not implementing our own policy and guideline.
Anybody, anybody in financial trouble can get free and reduced with the broccoli, right? So it's not like, and then, and they're still gonna get fed, it's just a matter of they may not get necessarily what they want.
They might not get pizza that day. They're gonna have to have peanut butter or a cheese sandwich, a fruit, and a milk. But there's not like, that's not, you get a charge. You still get charges. You get five charges before that. Yeah, so like, and that, that easy pay sends you emails home. I get them all the time because my kid's balance is low. You set the balance and it tells you. So I mean, they have knowledge, it's not like it's just a surprise and the next day like kid doesn't know.
And also, it's in progress book, it prints on report cards. Um, and I, I'm not asking for a vote. I mainly just wanted to make you aware that this problem is growing. We saw it last year and now we're on this same path again. Now, the surplus is being collected because when it goes on the student fee and they wanna play sports, they have to come in, do payment arrangements, and we're trying to get it that way, but short of the students participating in activities and how they pay fees.
Parking spots.
Yeah. So we, we just need to get.
That was a real effective way to collect fees.
D C trip was.
D C trip. Yes.
So if we don't get it under control, we may get a three million dollar deficit.
Well, I, it's not as, from sitting around, listening to discussions for several months, it's just not as simple as this. Uh, it's more complicated.
Sure.
Some of that money that is showing up as a deficit has been there for a long time, and it, it was moved from one column to another before you came on board.
Yes.
So we never saw it as a deficit. That's what makes this complicated, I think.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, and without getting into a long discussion on that.
You're saying, what, thirty-three thousand this year?
This year.
This is just since.
Yeah, this is thirty-three thousand.
And rather than roll the money over, which would have been rolled over if we were practicing like they have the past, last year it wasn't here, but.
Yeah.
Uh, the treasurer of last year says, no, we're not rolling this and, and absorbing it. We're putting it back on the budget and we've gotta come up with a plan. And so that's where the two twelve came from last year. This year is already just into a semester, it's thirty thousand.
I, I, what other administrative options do we have? Only report cards, you know, and.
Can't legally do that.
What, what other options do we have?
High school, well, eighth grade was always D C trip, which we haven't had. We collected a lot of money doing that. Uh, elementary, it's a lot more difficult. High school, you can stop students from going to proms, homecomings. Um, even if a student would qualify for free or reduced lunch, parent still has to fill the form out. And, um, you would think that that would be something that parents would rush to do. They don't. Um, we still have parents that have not turned in a contact number. Heaven forbid, there is some kind of emergency, even if they were on the list, that did get called that day, they wouldn't because they hadn't even updated their phone number for first and second grade students. It's a lot bigger problem than, and it's a fall off since I've been here sixteen years. Um, we've talked about, do you get a collection agency, I mean, it's.
Well, maybe it's even worse.
The last two years, it's gotten worse because I think just our economy is more difficult. People have lost jobs. Um, and the D C trip did make a lot of money.
I mean, myself personally, it would have probably just took one time on pizza day to end up having peanut butter sandwich, knowing that at home saying, hey, we gotta do something about the lungs because.
I'm okay with enforcing a policy that we already have in place. I think we do, since we haven't enforced it in as long as we have, maybe we do a good job of getting that out there, like, hey, this is coming. This is something, make sure that they know, and it's, nobody can say, hey, I'm shocked, or hey, I'm surprised, or, you know, and you might have some people upset, but I mean, we're not gonna make every day. Yeah, I agree. Uh, if, if we put this out there and said effective February first or February fifteenth, we are gonna start following the policy that, that's an easier bill for me to swallow.
And the policy was adopted June nineteen to two thousand eighteen, so I mean.
Yeah, following policy. It's administrative, administrative guidelines and policy are different.
Okay.
Guidelines are not board approved.
But we've been thrown in both rooms, so I can see why you said that.
Guidelines are just the recommendate, recommendations for how to operate, and we're not breaking policy, but we're not following the guidelines. Well, there's a precedent. We've not, you know, the precedent is, we haven't been following any of it. So regardless of all that we are precedent, we've not been following any of it, so. I didn't know that we have to say it's effective tomorrow morning. I think we've, you know, I think we have an opportunity to say this is, this is where we're heading. We're gonna start following our policy effective this date. And then that's, I said, like I said, that for me, that's easier to have this discussion if we do that.
And it is difficult to implement at an elementary level when you have students getting in line, um, you have a kid this fall, and he shows up in front of the students and peers, um, at the cashier with pizza. You know, what do you do? You take that, throw it in garbage can, give him cheese sandwich?
That happens a hundred percent of the time.
Elementary principals can speak more about that, but isn't that one of our major concerns? You tell them to give a cheese sandwich, but how do you, how do you go to that kid in class and say, you're getting a cheese sandwich?
Once you touch the food, you can't put it back.
No, you can't put it back, so we throw it away.
They take their tray and then they throw it away instead of.
In front of people. This is a bigger, this is a bigger problem.
Yeah, I don't like that either. That sounds. That's the hard part of this, because those little kids, they come up every day, they don't know about all this, and they just come up with that tray, and that's the difficult part.
Any other, they have to sign up to use D C pay, and you have to pay a fee to use D C pay. So parents that aren't paying for their lunch on the day of day are not on D C pay, and there's not. I pay D C for that. To put money on there now.
So Lori and Jenny, don't the, do the teachers in the morning, don't they, do they take the kids' lunch order like they used to? I'm sorry.
You do a lunch cow on the computer, so you say how many kids are buying today?
Okay.
Enter that number into the computer. The teachers have no knowledge of how much money they hold on their accounts, nothing.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering if, uh, that's a discussed for enough time, you know, I, we can't solve the problem, but.
Cause we have gone this route before, and.
Last year, yeah.
I mean, that's what, that's what happens.
Please switch the cashier first.
No, I don't, it's not even a cashier.
Well, I mean, just before they get, I mean, uh, dumping the food.
If I have thirty kids, if I have thirty kids in line on cashier, I don't know if you're getting a cheese sandwich.
Right.
Until they give up too.
Right.
And now you have twenty kids waiting in line.
I like the idea of it first.
And let, and let, food being dumped in front of a child, which I think is ridiculous.
So, so the idea tonight was to let you know, we've not been following the guideline. We need to get this spending under control. We wanna talk about it with principals at a January meeting. We would also communicate with families before that, and we said it most likely would be before February first. But we do wanna start that transition.
Sounds good.
So we're not throwing this. And that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. Mr. Fussneck.
Mr. Gabbard, I have five items. Uh, three of them are informational, two of them are requiring some action. First one is just informational. These are the board of education meeting dates, um, as, uh, Miss Spivey just spoke, January ninth organizational meeting. And those are the proposed dates. I know Miss Spivey, Spivey's worked on those. Um, they are the fourth Tuesday or the fourth Monday of each month, with the exception of May in December because of Memorial Day, Christmas, so that's something we can vote on. January. Um, the second one, item I have is a motion to approve book rationale.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the E M S book rationale. Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmitt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Third item I have, Mr. Gabbard, is informational only. I did, uh, want to attach the dyslexia requirements that are in there from House Bill four thirty-six that you can read through. Uh, Scott spoke about them earlier. Uh, there will be a letter sent out to parents, um, in order for us to train our staff. We're gonna have two days off for, um, professional development, uh, January thirteenth and sixteenth. This letter's not gone out yet. Um, I know Miss Spivey worked, um, with the department and, uh, with the cabinet to create this letter, and I wanted to, uh, show you ahead of time before it's sent out.
Okay, thank you.
The last, or item D is a field trip. This was the one where we just revised the agenda. It was, uh, just submitted. It's for a wrestling trip to Wheeling, West Virginia, December twenty-seventh, and they, uh, they will depart, return on the twenty-ninth. It's a wrestling team, uh, twenty athletes. They'll take a van and a bus. Uh, the head coach and two assistant coaches will be there. The cost will be funded through the wrestling program. And, um, obviously I, it was just be put on the agenda because there was not a proposed form to fill out.
I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the field trip as presented per the wrestling program. So move. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Messerschmitt.
Do I have a five?
Can I see that? Yeah. Coach Kniff just filled that out. Uh, probably, oh, you filled it out?
Yeah, I filled it out.
Assistant coach filled it out, uh, just a few hours ago.
So, uh, how long has that been on the books?
Well, it's been on the books, uh, according to the athletic record for, um, short period of time, but, uh, long enough to get that in before today. And, and I don't know where the ball was dropped, if it was the athletic department or the coach, but.
So what is the guideline or policy for turning that stuff in in a timely fashion?
I could have very easily, um, not submitted today. And the kickback for that on the board, I honestly, I don't know if it would have been worth the, uh, I don't know if it would have worked, if I maybe would have for you guys, but I, I didn't want the twenty wrestlers or, or how many players on the team to suffer. And I figured we can deal with, you know, Wyatt was there, I can deal with that later, but I didn't want to penalize the, those athletes.
Not their fault.
So, so they're taking a bus and a van?
Yes.
Our bus and van?
Yes. It's my understanding, that's what it said. Wheeling, West Virginia.
There's not a wrestling tournament in Ohio?
Well, we actually, uh, there is. Um, we just, uh, had someone that won the Cincinnati Co- Coaches Classic, um, this past week. We have a wrestler actually compete number one in the state. I don't know, maybe you want to go to Pennsylvania or West Virginia.
We, we'll get everybody high and figure who went to West Virginia.
Will you be going?
I will be not personally to this one, though I have a previous experience. This will be Kniff and King and, uh, Phil Walker.
They're, okay, cause they were the only two listed on that list for us.
How many wrestlers are going?
Oh, no.
I put twenty down. There's fifteen ways. We'll probably take some J V guys, swap in to different places. It's a dual tournament, so we compete as a team.
There's three.
Play bands as a team instead of in digital.
Do you take a school bus to West Virginia? What they do?
Uh, the idea would be to take the bus down, and then while we're there, we'll shuttle kids with the bus, with the van, and the bus will come out.
I think you can drive a bus.
When, when are they leaving?
December twenty-seven.
December twenty-seven.
Eight days from today. Is that right?
We can say, no.
I, I don't wanna penalize the boys.
I will, I will tell you that I would find out, um, you know, where the ball was dropped. It was either the coach or the A D, and that's, there's always that one between.
Well, if, if the assistant coach had to fill out the paperwork, that's usually where that paperwork comes from, is the coach. I don't know, but.
So if we don't know how many are going.
There's fifteen.
Seventeen.
How they're getting there.
So fifteen to twenty, that's, that's not a specific.
Do they have, do they have?
Yeah.
How many people, how, Zach, how many kids are going on this trip?
I, I estimate that, that's, there's fifteen weights. We'll probably take two or three actors to be able to shift some things around, so.
We have a wrestler for every weight class?
The reason we can't take the school bus to Chicago is because the insurance does not cover the interstate line.
Yeah. Yeah, see, he doesn't want it out, right?
Well, yeah, otherwise I'd use the school bus.
That's why you get a charter. So what bus are you taking?
I, I think I'd almost have to ask the old question that I've heard a lot of times. Have you thought this through? I think if we have to say.
So that's, so, so that's the reason you don't take a school bus to Chicago?
I can't, at one time it was a hundred miles, about a quarter. Another time it was more, had to be a very, insurance, I don't know. Chicago's further than Alabama or Louisville, but, but, you know, other than West Virginia.
Right.
Could be close enough.
It's right across the border.
Right.
Has, has Larry even seen this, assistant?
Yeah.
I was in a meeting with Mr. Gabbard, Miss Spire, um, and just a few minutes before, a different meeting. I got a text along with, uh, Miss Beckett. Uh, that they wanted to go on this trip. Well, first of all, we don't have a form, and that's how this whole thing got started, literally. I.
Zach, why didn't you guys start talking? It's twenty minutes before you had to leave.
It was twenty minutes before I had to be in another meeting. I had not, had talked with anyone other than the athletic director, told him they can't go for sure if I don't have a form. That's when this form showed up in my last meeting.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I have this function as an assistant.
We're not blaming you.
Yeah, I, um, but as far as I know, it's been on our schedule for quite a while. Uh, we were planning to go on this for a while. As far as I'm aware, Kniff wasn't aware he had to fill out that form. Now, I'm not a hundred percent on that. I'm not, I'm not a James.
Is Kniff a new coach here?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't know if we can approve it if they can drive a bus. I don't.
I'm, I'm not, I don't think we can even vote on this, not knowing if our insurance is gonna cover us across the state lines with our school bus.
If somebody wants to check over in the executive session, we're going to, like, I don't, I don't want to punish the kids.
I hope they find out insurance. That's the power of the night.
Yes. I'll tell you what, I'm gonna just remove it. That item.
We, we got a motion in a second, don't we?
Yeah, they can withdraw.
All right, discussing that way.
Yeah, we don't have to vote in anyway. Right?
Okay, well, do we wanna give the, uh, my question is, do we wanna give them an opportunity to see if our insurance will cover them to cross state lines? Or do we just wanna put it into it now?
So if we come back tomorrow, we've got the answer to all these, cause I, I mean, to Kelly's point, it's, it's quarter after seven on a Monday night, are we gonna be able to answer this?
Which Shane or John might know. I mean, if somebody wanted to reach out to them.
We, we don't even have any kids anymore. It's tomorrow, fifteen and twenty. And, and I'd be honest, I still haven't even seen it. So I, I really don't know.
It's not much to see, we're also.
Hey, don't, you're not getting the.
Don't insult his portfolio. He's such a person.
I'm ready to vote.
Where's Zach? Like, shoot the messenger.
I've got him.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Are you going back and saying, no, you have the first motion, you're saying no?
Would you call a roll please?
Yeah, all we have is a person.
Mr. Pressler?
No.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
No.
Mr. Gabbard?
No.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
No.
Mr. York?
Nope.
You can let, uh, Mr. Kniff know, hey, we're not going to wrestling tournament, and I'm probably meet with him and Mr. Tots tomorrow.
I hate to, no, I'll never, we need that stuff way ahead of time.
We can just send much kids on school buses, not have insurance.
All right, takes me to my last item. Uh, I did informational from superintendent. Uh, this is my last, uh, meeting, superintendent, uh, obviously. Been here sixteen years, um, just wanna say thank you for your activity. And, uh, you've been good to me. Appreciate, uh, change over the last sixteen years to be a principal at the middle school, the high school, superintendent for the last seven years, seven and a half years. And we've made a lot of progress. Uh, I think this is a great district. I know that you're not gonna go to any surrounding districts to get the kind of education. When I say education, it's a lot more than H's, B's and C's. We put out some very good students, uh, who become citizens, and I should come back here and live. I'm very proud of the time that I've been here. Proud of all the administrators, all the work they've done. Um, it's not easy being superintendent over the last couple of years, especially with COVID. Um, it's been very difficult, challenging. I appreciate my wife's here tonight. I appreciate her, uh, dealing with a bunch of heavy trauma come home late at night, uh, over the last two and a half years. But, uh, it's always been good, and I'll say thank you, and, uh.
Thank you, Russ. Well, we, we definitely appreciate everything. I mean, you've gave sixteen years of your life to this district, and, uh, that, don't take that lightly. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Means a lot.
I wa, I wanna say, um, I was the guy that kept re- recruiting him from Princeton, and, uh, he said no the first time, year, second year. We talked him into it, so I think that's the way it worked, uh, Russ, but, uh, no, I, uh, I appreciate all you do and all you've done. No one, uh, can ever understand what it's like to sit in that seat unless they've actually done it. Uh, to do, do that for seven and a half, eight years is a huge, uh, responsibility. Uh, it, it never goes away. You're the superintendent twenty-four seven, uh, and, um, I thank you for that. And I know, uh, all of us pay, that have sat there, pay a, a physical toll, uh, a mental thing as well, and sometimes relational. Uh, your families, uh, you still have to make your family the most important part, so, uh, appreciate you, man, and good luck. I, I hope you take my advice and you spend a year off and just, uh, travel the world, uh, or do something fun, and, uh, before you jump right back into the thick of things. But, um, I appreciate what you've done, and, uh.
Thank you, Mr. York.
The standards that you have, that you've exhibited to people, uh, I think are, are super important, and you've done a great job, Zach.
I appreciate that, Mr. York. Appreciate the opportunity, uh, when you hired me sixteen years ago. Um, I was only thirty-seven.
And now you feel like you're sixty-seven.
Yeah, I said that, those are dog years, I believe, uh. But, uh, uh, Miss Spire, you're awesome. You guys are in great hands, uh, and I am hopeful that the levy will pass. I think when the message gets out about the great things that are going on here, this is a great place to educate kids. Um, it really is. And, uh, I spent half my career here, and I don't regret any minute of it. You guys have been good to me. Thanks, Eric.
So Russ, I just wanna say, I don't think I can let you go help. One more thing. Uh, that's a joke, I always have a moment. I appreciate the professionalism. I know that you and I have always agreed, we disagreed a lot. Um, but what you've brought to the district, I think, is just beyond reproach. The people that I've worked with my time on the board. You came in after a very difficult person left, and, um, teachers would close their doors when you walked through, and I think that didn't happen. I think they opened their doors to you, and I think you brought that closeness back, so I appreciate that.
Appreciate that. Uh, I'm gonna miss working with you. We have had our disagreements, but you've always been like, uh, a sister to me, I still love and appreciate you. And I know that you're here for kids, and so it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, I can't get upset with you. Because I know you're passionate and, and you, uh, you fight for kids, and, uh, and that means a lot. So I hope you stay on the board and continue to do that, Mr. Gabbard.
I haven't been on this board very long, Russ, but I do appreciate you reaching out to me and bringing me on and serving as a coach and mentors. I was kinda learning the ropes. And, uh, you know, I, you know, I've, I've learned an awful lot from you, and I, I think very highly of you. You know, all the things everybody says about you in terms of an educator, superintendent, are all great, but I think you're an absolutely great person. You're a great man, you're a great individual. And that, that is what I would remember you guys. Appreciate that, especially. You guys, uh, it's a good board. You guys are gonna do a lot of great things, and it's exciting, uh, you know. Sit back and watch, and, but I'm hopeful about the levy, I really am. And when I talk to, uh, it's, it's one thing I can say about this board, and I know that the administrators out here, you put kids first. You do, and, uh, I can't say that that's what everyone does nowadays. And, uh, I appreciate it. I know we've had some long nights together, gotten close, and, uh, I will miss you guys. Thank you.
Thank you again. Let's go to our last executive session. Ready? I'll look for a motion to move to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official. Or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee, or student request of public hearing. Preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiation or bargaining sessions with employees.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we are back.
I mean, they all signed up, they just were there.
Eight forty-five? And at this time, I'm gonna look for a motion for personnel items and supplementals as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And at this time, I'm gonna look for a nomination, classified nomination of Anne Marie Pressler.
So moved.
Mr. York, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
He has to be upstairs. Mr. Pressler?
Upstairs.
Yep, you know, no problem.
Mr. York, would you like to share anything with the district?
Uh, yeah, I've, I've talked about this before from Butler Tech. Uh, they, they'll be starting their, uh, Cafe Lee, uh, coming up. And they haven't put out the, the menu of whose students are doing what month or week, so I'll, I'll get that to you guys, so you know when Edwood kids are going to be preparing the meals. Um, they are, uh, Butler Tech is, uh, looking to start, um, with requests for, proposal for a new hangar at the Miltown Airport. For to enlarge the aeronautics program that they have going on, so there's a lot of growth all the time, so it's, it's exciting what they're able to do. That's it, it's pretty neat.
I know we have an Edwood grad working at that, Tyler Mayterfield.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, he works over there.
Wow.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
I got two things. Um, would like to just give a shout out to, uh, Amber Schmidt as the local twelve teacher of the week.
Oh, neat.
Yeah, that was, uh, that was pretty cool, and I think that's well-deserved recognition. And then, I was very impressed, uh, last week at EIS, they did a holiday Christmas concert. Uh, it was done by grade, and I went in to see the fifth graders sing. Uh, and Mrs. Lamb, who I understand is a new music teacher, did a really awesome job with that. Um, Lori Harrison, as always, did a really awesome job with that. Um, so I, I just, I thought it was, uh, it was a really awesome event, you know, leading it to the, to the holiday. And, uh, it was very well received by the community and, uh, and parents of the district, so just would like to recognize Mrs. Lamb and Mrs. Schmidt for all they do for our district.
Thank you. Mr. Pressler?
The, uh, PTO is back, and, uh, Santa Shop was in the schools the last couple of weeks, and we had some volunteers step up. And actually, they asked for some more volunteers, and a lot of parents came out to volunteer and help go Santa Shop. So, uh, thank you to all the parents who volunteered their time to come out and make that happen, and hopefully, they're gonna help get things back to normal a little bit. Uh, due to COVID, I don't think it's been around for a couple of years, so, uh, you know, hopefully we'll get some father-daughter dances and stuff like that going on, so it's exciting.
Thank you. Mrs. Ashcraft?
I just wanna wish all the teachers and staff, administration, uh, happy holidays and Merry Christmas. I hope they have a good break. Um, I know that we've all worked hard this year, and it's been rough. There's been a couple of things going on, but everybody stepped through it, so I hope they enjoy their break. And so I have.
Thank you. Uh, not a whole lot I would like to add. I would just, everybody have a safe holiday. Um, Russ, I'm gonna miss you, buddy.
Miss you guys.
Um. Always be a friend. And, uh, we'll see you, uh, in about a month. This time, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.